President.
If you will, may we take a moment in silence. Thank you. Let's all stand and pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any items to be added to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we add three following items. Under appointments, I'd like to add number 13G, T. L. Ak, Dennis Benhoff, as the citizen representative. I'd also like to make a motion that we move item 7D, Strategic Plan, from our consent agenda to new business as item 12G. And I'd also like to add item 12F, under new business, economic development.
Second. Thank you, we have a second.
All right, give me just one second. I'm gonna plug this in and open the vote. Okay. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I'm gonna close the vote.
Passes unanimous. Item number six, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion from the board for the approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that we approve the agenda with the additions that were just added.
Mr. Warren. Second.
Second.
Mr. Blackstock.
Please cast your vote. All right, please cast your vote before I close it. I'm gonna close the vote.
Vote carries unanimous, approval of the agenda. Number seven, consent agenda. Do I have a motion from the board? Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we approve the consent agenda with the removed, with moved items. Thank you, Mr. Barber, do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Warren.
All right, please cast your vote. I'm gonna close the vote.
Passes unanimous. Minutes in the December 18, 2018 work session.
Chairman, I believe we have the family for Mr. Preston Turner here, if y'all want to come down and read that resolution.
Do we have that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Y'all can.
Good afternoon, everybody. All right, this is the official recognition of the football accomplishments of Mr. Preston Turner, one of the students at Chatham High School. Pennsylvania County Board Supervisors Resolution 2019, January 1. Virginia, at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors on January 15, 2019, in the General District Courtroom of the Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition, the following resolution was presented and adopted. Whereas in 1972, Carlton Johnson set the Virginia High School League varsity football single game touchdown record by scoring eight touchdowns. Since then, this mark has been matched six times. And whereas in the fall of 2017, this 45-year-old Virginia High School League record was broken by Preston Turner, a Chatham High School cavalier. And whereas during Chatham High School's first home football game of the season, Preston surpassed the previous single game touchdown mark of eight by scoring nine times in the 79-54 rout of the James River Knights. And whereas while breaking the VHSL record for most touchdowns in a single game, Preston also broke several school records along the way. And whereas in the same game, Preston scored eight rushing touchdowns, a new school record rushed for 448 yards, a new school record, and caught one touchdown pass for 27 yards, bringing his total yards from scrimmage for the game to 475. Again, a new school record, and scored nine total touchdowns. And whereas Preston is currently continuing his football career at Virginia Union University in Richmond, Virginia, and has performed admirably, bringing recognition not only to himself, but to his school, his county, and its citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pennsylvania County Board Supervisors on behalf of all county citizens express their sincere appreciation, admiration, and congratulations to Preston Turner for his accomplishments of breaking both the aforementioned Chatham High School and Virginia High School League football records, given under my hand this 15th day of January, 2019. Mr. Joe B. Davis, Chairman, Pennsylvania County Schooling, I'm sorry, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. Now, there's a little more that I would like to say. Again, we recognize his parents. Raise your hands. Grandparents. School superintendent. Athletic director, coach, school board member, Virginia High School League representative, if he is here. His church pastor, Zurg Miler, and N double A C representatives that are in the audience, if you will, raise your hands. Very good. Make a note, please, if you will, that today, the 15th of January, is the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. This award is fitting on today. The reason being is this. Dr. King emphasized the days when people's worth would be determined not by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. This young man has shown a real amount of character, and we say to him and his family, keep up the good work. Finally, it is a blessing for you to have chosen Virginia Union University of Richmond, Virginia. Now, why do I say that? The institution, Virginia Union University, which is located at 1500 Lombardi Avenue, Richmond, Virginia, has, in its alumni, great men. And among those have been the first African-American governor in the United States, Governor Douglas Wilder; pro-basketball player Charles Oakley; actor Sidney Poitier, who served on the Board Directors of the university; Ronald Corrigan, Ronald Mayor, the Honorable Sherman Lee. And last but not least, yours truly, Charles Oakley. So once again, we want to say congratulations to Preston. Also, I want to make mention of the fact that as much as I would like to claim that Preston lives in my district, he actually lives in Mr. Warren's, thank you, Mr. Warren's district, so we must show respects to him. But again, thanks to everybody for coming and being a part of this wonderful recognition. Thank you.
And the media wants to get a picture, so if y'all can squint in a little bit.
Yeah, y'all get much tighter.
Let me get back in here somewhere.
If I could get the family to come around in front because the screens are blocking.
Can we just put their bike down this way?
Pretty impressive, touchdown in one game. I couldn't hunt tin yards now, so.
Number item eight, presentations. We have no presentations that I know of at this particular time. No, sir. Hearing of the citizens, number nine. Each person addressing the board under hearing of the citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county or the registered agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record. And unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during hearing of the citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum of 45 minutes. Individual that has signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Number 10, public hearings.
We have two people signed up for hearing of citizens.
Okay.
It's on the white sheet.
That is correct.
You need to just acknowledge the first person.
This is my first time at bat tonight, so bear with me. We have a Ms. Connie Wright from the Banister District who has signed up to speak. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Connie Wright in the Banister District. My concern is that I have a house on the north end of town. It's right on the outskirts of the town limits. And my concern is about the garbage. I'm sure it's written somewhere, and I just need to read up on it to see who is excused to not pay. I'm sure it is written somewhere, and I just need to know where. But my concern is, I went to the town council meeting last night, and I believe they told me that it was, I could speak to maybe the board of supervisors. But my concern is that, yes, we've been tacked with a garbage fee, but you have to use the dumpsters at a set time. When you leave out in the mornings to go to work, the dumpster is closed. And then when you get off work sometimes, if you're working 12 hours and you try to stop by the grocery store or something, that same dumpster is closed. So we have the fee, but we're also having to use it at a set time, so then you gotta ride your garbage all day. But I was just wanted to address my concerns about the garbage and the fee. And if you have several things with your name on it, do you have to pay for each item or each housing that you have your name on? Because I'm in the town limits, and I'm paying town to pick up garbage. And I also have a house on the outskirts, and I'm paying a garbage fee. So I really just wanted to express my concerns about it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Ms. Wright. Next individual we have, Mr. Willie Fitzgerald from the Banister District.
Good evening. My name is Willie Fitzgerald, Banister District. And I come tonight to address you, first of all, to let you know, as most of you probably already know, I'm no longer the president of the N double A C P in Pennsylvania County. But I want to thank all of you for your support over the years that you have given to the organization, and hope you will continue. But I'm not through with the N double A C P as that I am now the area chairperson for Davo, Pennsylvania County, Mecklenburg, a couple of counties in the state of Virginia. But I come tonight to speak about another situation that I have as a citizen in the county living off of Mill Creek Road. Mountain Valley Pipeline is making a mess on our highway. We clean our cars and go up the road and come back down the road. We got mud all over our vehicles. They run their big tractor-trailers and other big equipment all up and down the road, putting mud all in the road. They run out the road, and on the side of the road, they're making gullets along and bringing that mud up and down on our highway. Along with cleaning the highway, when they are completed, they should be required to fix our edge of the runoff back because it is a mess that they have made out there on Mill Creek Road. And I hate to say it, but it just so happened it's in a minority community. All of us pretty much that live in that area, we're all in the minority race. And I'm not saying they're discriminating in any mean, but it's a mess, and we need something done by the pipeline. And they ought to be made to pay for us to clean our vehicles because you can't clean a vehicle on a Saturday afternoon and go to church Sunday morning, and your car not messed up. They are trying to do something, I give them credit, but it's still a mess. So I would appreciate anything that this board can do to help us out on that road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Now we come to the public hearings. Rezoning public hearings. Pursuant to Article 5, Division 6 of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, the Board of Supervisors have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The board must ensure that all of its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. And let me say, before I open this first case, for the remainder of the four cases that we will cover, however your case is heard, whether it's yea or nay, whether it was rezoned, you have the right and the opportunity to stay. If your case has been rezoned, once it's rezoned, you have the right to stay or you have the right to leave. You're not bound to stay here. But we would encourage you to stay if you liked. But I just thought maybe we would cover that because sometimes there's some confusion with it. What do I need to do now after I've heard my case? So anyway, case number one, public hearing rezoning case R-19-001. Mr. Kimmy G. Lackey, Tunstall Election District, Business B2, Business District, General to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District. Mr. Gregory Sides.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Case R-119-001, Kimmy Lackey has petitioned to rezone a total of 1.90 acres, two parcels of land located on State Road 708, Long Circle, in the Tunstall Election District from B2 Business District General to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to allow for placement of a double-wide mobile home and to make the zoning consistent with its residential use. Once the property is rezoned to R1, then all uses listed under Section 35-222 are permitted. The planning commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kimmy Lackey is here to represent the petition.
Yes, sir. Mr. Lackey? Counsel, let me ask you a question. Was I not supposed to open this?
You need to open the public hearing.
Hold one moment, Mr. Lackey. I opened this hearing at 7:23. We've already went through the preliminaries. So, Mr. Lackey?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Davis.
It's just a matter of whether you have anything to add.
Do you have anything to add?
I do not, I mean, I.
No one has signed up, so.
Close the public hearing.
I want to close this public hearing at 7:24. That was pretty quick. What's the nature of the board?
Mr. Chairman, case R-19-001, I'd like to make a motion, we rezone this property from B2 Business to R1 Residential. And I'd like to point out, I'm very familiar with this property the way around the corner, right?
Okay.
It's consistent.
We have a second. We have a move by Mr. Barber, and second, Mr. Warren. Is there any other discussion from the board? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will close the vote.
Mr. Lackey, you get a unanimous vote. Your property has been rezoned.
I'd like to thank you, thank the board, thank you.
Now moving on to case number two. I'm gonna let you, Mr. Sides, handle that.
Okay, case two. And, Mr. Hunt, we need to open the public hearing at the time of the.
Did I do that?
For my point.
Can I do it after he said?
Do it after he.
Okay, case R-19-002, Thomas Crawford has petitioned to rezone 13.19 acres located on State Road 768, Babby Road, in the Stanton River Election District from RC1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District for agricultural purposes, specifically to grow hops and produce local beer. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The planning commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet.
Thank you, Mr. Sides. I opened this case up, case number two, 7:25.
And, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Thomas Crawford is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir, I have no comment.
Yes, sir, no comment, okay, thank you. No one signed up?
Mr. Chairman, we have no one else signed up.
Okay, so I close this at 7:25 and a half. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, in case R-19-002, I move that we rezone 13.19 acres from RC1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District located off Babby Road in the Stanton River District.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Blackstock. We have a second.
This is, this is consistent with a comprehensive plan.
Second by Mr. Farmer. Is there any discussion? Okay.
All votes have been cast, I will close the vote.
Mr. Crawford, passed unanimous. Your property has been rezoned. Public hearing number three, case number three, Mr. Sides.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Case R-19-003, Panny Fork Farms LLC has contract purchaser has petitioned to rezone 0.50 acres located on State Road 794, Old Mine Road in the Callens-Gretton Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to combine with adjacent parcel of land zoned agricultural. Once the property is rezoned to A1, then all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The planning commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request, and the staff summary is enclosed in the board packet.
Thank you, Mr. Sides. I opened this case at 7:28.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Fred Elliott is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Fred Elliott, and we purchased a 27-acre tract with this one-half acre zoned R1 embedded in the larger tract, which is zone A1, to add to our farm. And this is just a housekeeping action to clean it up and make it consistent with the use of the property. And that's what we're doing here.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott.
And, Mr. Chairman, we have no one else signed up for this case.
Hearing none. I close this at 7:29. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for case R-19-003, that .5 acres become rezoned from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to combine with the adjacent parcel of land surrounding it.
Okay, we have a second. We have a second. By Mr. Blackstock, who got you there, Mr. Warren. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
Mr. Elliott, your property carries with a unanimous vote. Your property has been rezoned, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening.
Case number four.
Yes, sir. Case four, R-19-004, Suzie Q. etc. LLC has petitioned to rezone 18.14 acres located off State Road 702, McDaniel Road, and off State Road 640, Riceville Road, in the Banister Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District for horses and a future wedding venue, including trail rides, which, if rezoned, would require special use permit. Once the property is rezoned to A1, then all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The planning commission with opposition recommended denying the petitioner's request. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet.
Thank you, Mr. Sides. I opened. I opened this hearing up at 7:30 p.m.
Mr. Chairman, the representative for this petition is Ms. Susan Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any questions for me?
Do you have anything to add?
Just that I own a catering business, and we want a homestead. We want to put our horses and cows on the land.
Ms. Brown, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, may I ask how many head of horses and cattle you have?
Well, we have two big horses and two ponies.
Okay.
No cow yet.
And what?
No cows yet.
No cattle yet? Okay. I would assume they would be beef?
Yes.
Producing? Okay.
We kind of want to do a farm-to-table venue.
Oh, well, in that case, would that eventually involve slaughter?
Probably not by us.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I close this...
I got a couple of questions.
Oh, okay. Pardon me.
Well, the planning commission recommended by six to two vote with opposition, oh, I see, Mr. Stowe, Mr. Davis weren't there. So this went through unanimously with the people that were at the planning commission, is that right?
Two to nine.
Two to nine.
Yeah, I see that.
Mr. Chairman?
What was the reason for the denial, Mr. Sides?
I think because we weren't here at the first hearing.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. The applicant was not in attendance at the meeting, and I think they felt like they had to turn it down based on lack of information.
We just want it to be our future home.
You okay, Mr. Blackstock?
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure I understand what's going on. So y'all didn't show up at the first hearing, so this really has not been, you have not been able to vocalize to the planning commission?
Correct.
Okay. So you'll know, I'm going to vote to deny this, and the reason I'm going to vote to deny it, because I think it needs to go through the planning commission first, and you need to show up and explain to them in detail what you want, and then it'll come back to the Board.
Okay.
That's my individual vote.
All right. Mr. Dr. Miller was...
Well, actually, I was going to say that in the recommendations. The fact is that that same night of the planning commission, Mrs. Brown, was it, Brown? Yeah, Mrs. Brown called me and indicated the fact that the reason they were not there is because she and Mr. Brown were both ill, and as a result of them not being able to defend their motion or their request, I felt incumbent upon me to deny the request.
I was going to ask a question. Mr. Hunt, like what he said, I don't think this board did, can they withdraw without penalty?
Here's what the Board needs to be aware of. If this goes all the way to a vote tonight, we have a zoning order to support about the state code that says that you cannot bring the same rezoning action for the same parcel for a 12-month period. If it's, y'all have an inkling to deny this, to make it go back through the planning commission, please let them withdraw it without penalty, which will allow them, they might have to repay for some advertising, but allow them to not have to wait a full year to run this through the system again.
Okay, Mr. Warren.
I'm confused.
That was exactly what I was going to point out, because it's in your best interest, it appears, to withdraw and go back to planning commission to attend the meeting, as Mr. Blackstock stated.
The only thing that I have to say is that no one signed up to go against the case. So the burden of proof, once again, is on the constituents who didn't show up. So I'm just, I'm putting my two cents in there.
I'm a little confused. What is the, what do we do at the planning commission?
Essentially what you're doing now.
The planning commission makes a recommendation to the full Board for action. So that usually occurs two weeks prior, two weeks prior to this meeting. So you were signed up for a public hearing at that time. Whether you were sick or some reason, you did not go, the reason why the Board voted against, some of the Board voted against you is that you did not show up to defend your petition. So the recommendation to the Board is to approve it, but there were...
To deny.
To deny.
What concerns does the Board have? I couldn't hear it. Hold on, I'm hard to hear.
Yes, sir, Mr. Warren.
My concerns are not at all addressing the project and the rezoning. My concerns are that we haven't heard from the planning commission, because they were not allowed to ask you the questions. They're our pointees, and I have a real problem with overriding a unanimous vote by a planning commission to deny. So, you know, I would follow, respectfully follow their lead, and as Mr. Blackstock stated, you know, if I have to vote tonight, I'm going to vote tonight.
So we should just withdraw and then call the planning commission and reschedule?
Yes.
Okay.
And just come before the planning commission, and then it'll be this again.
If you contact the zoning administrator, the same one you did to start this process, she'll essentially restart the process. Now, we may need to... Excuse me?
You have to pay them the rezoning money again?
I believe it would be without penalty.
It would be a new case, yeah, it'd be coming back. And we may have to delay it by a month because the planning commission didn't do the withdrawal of that penalty, so we might need to take them a motion to allow you to reapply without penalty, and that, so that may delay it by one month. But then you'd have to start back over, because the planning commission is the advisory board, and right now they have no advisory.
And they're not here tonight, the planning commission, they come on the first set of hearings.
They met on the very, they met on the first Tuesday. And I know it's hindsight, but...
Would they suggest that you withdraw and start the process over?
If you request a withdrawal without penalty, those are the magic words, withdraw without penalty, and that would allow you to reapply within, you wouldn't have to wait a year.
What if y'all just approve it? We could be on the way.
They're not going to, they're not going to.
Gentlemen, it's a simple farm. We just want to change it from what it is to where we're going. I'm not sure what's going on, but...
Let me, let me make a motion when you finish.
Well, you'll never get to a motion. Do you...
I'm hard to hear.
Okay. You have two options tonight. You either roll the dice and see if they approve it.
I'm a gambler, man.
Okay, but it seems that they're leaning towards not allowing it. If they don't allow it, you can't rezone this for 12 months from today. If you withdraw without penalty, your delay will probably only be 30 to 60 days, not 12 months. Those are two options, either withdraw without penalty, roll the dice and see what they vote. If they vote against you, we can't hear this for 12 months from today.
We're going to withdraw without penalty.
Happy wife, happy life.
Good wife.
Do we ask that? Do we ask you withdrawal without penalty yet?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we finished?
You made that request, there's no one signed up, so Mr. Chairman can close the public hearing.
Okay, I'm going to close this public hearing at 7:40. I guess I need to go through the proper protocol. Is any other discussion from the Board members? Is this correct? Or...
He's withdrawn without penalty, so it's a nullity. Y'all don't have to do anything. Go back to the planning commission.
Point, question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, so everybody can be clear and make sure we're all on the same page. When he has withdrawn without penalty, does that imply that they do or do not have to pay the fee again?
They're going to pay the fee.
They're going to have to pay the fee again.
The without penalty refers to being allowed to bring it back and not have to wait for 12 months.
All right, but there will be a fee.
There'll be a fee.
Okay.
Because we have hard advertising costs with the newspaper to redo this, and we can't eat those costs.
Okay.
And I think, Mr. County Attorney, I think it'd be cleaner if there's a motion to accept their withdrawal without penalty.
I agree. Does the Board want to make that motion?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, well, I'm sorry. In the case R-19-004, Suzie Q. etc., I would like to offer a motion that the Board accept the petitioner's request to withdraw their petition without penalty.
Second, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion by Dr. Miller and a second by Mr. Warren.
Kayla Kane typed this in. Why don't you just let her do a roll call vote if there's a second?
That's good. The motion isn't like that anyway. We're good.
Cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, I will close the vote.
unanimous.
All right, thanks, sir.
Other public hearings? We have no other public hearings. Number item 11, unfinished business. We have no unfinished business on that. Number 12, new business. Emergency purchase of a roll-off truck. Mr. Richard Hicks.
Good evening.
Good night. I'd like to request the Board's authorization to make an emergency purchase of a roll-off truck. Now, we currently have six trucks that we use on a daily basis. Two of those trucks I would rate as poor, and we actually have five spares. Three of the spares don't run at all. Two of the spares run sometimes, but they usually spend more time in the shop than time on the road. So we're having a difficult time keeping six trucks on the road, and you've got 21 compacture sites you've got to go to on a daily basis. We're having trouble keeping up. You did authorize the purchase of a truck a few months ago. That truck had been ordered, and it won't be here probably until March or April. We started making phone calls, and we did find a couple vendors that actually had a truck on the yard that is available for purchase now. So we're asking for your authorization to purchase the 2019 Mack roll-off truck from Worldwide Equipment in the amount of $155,514, which is fairly comparable to the same truck we ordered a few months ago. There are still some bond funds labeled, and in those bonds and solid waste funds, that money can only be spent for landfill equipment, so we think this truck also could offend the rules of the bond funds. We're still trying to collect the solid waste deals. I think Jim told you earlier this evening, we collected about 63% of our solid waste funds, so we don't really want to use those funds because we don't know the exact amount that will be in between now and June 30th, especially since those deals aren't as passable until after June. So, again, our basic request is for you to authorize an emergency purchase of the 2019 Mack roll-off truck in the amount of $155,514. And I'll try and answer the question if you want to.
Mr. Chairman, I'll also remind the Board that the reason we have this capacity in this borrowing is because of the work Mr. Hicks did and other staff in locating a slightly-used earth-moving pan. We had budgeted considerably more funds that came in well, well, under budget, like $200,000 under budget, which allows us the capacity to replace some of this daily rolling stock that's giving us so much problem.
Thank you. Any discussion from the Board?
I got a question.
Should we get a motion on the floor?
That's right.
Yeah, you need a motion, a second, and then discussion.
You want to make a motion? Who would like to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to get things rolling. I make a motion to approve an emergency purchase of 2019 Mack roll-off truck from Worldwide Equipment in the amount of $155,514.
And a second, anybody? From Mr. Warren? Okay, now, we're open for discussion.
Mr. Hicks, what color is this truck? Granite?
I believe it's going to be white. That was just...
Okay, that's what I was going to ask, too. Who's going to paint it? The master of the ones? Okay. It says it's granite. Right at the top, right when you start down the list, it says granite.
I'm sorry, it says granite, so...
So it's going to be granite?
Yeah.
Wait, we're going to want the same colors as the rest of the fleet? Or we're going to want a different color?
I'm kind of right now, I don't care what color it is. We really have a different color.
Hold on, hold on.
I mean, I wonder if you could use as a negotiation to get them to change the color?
We could try.
Because, I mean, trucks, it's expensive, and we have to do it.
Mr. Blackstock?
Mr. Hicks, you mentioned that this was, we've already ordered a truck authorized in a budget several months ago, and I assume it's basically the same type truck. We went through the procurement process. This is an emergency purchase. What was the cost? What was the cost of the truck that went through the procurement process? How close are we to that?
Five to six thousand dollars.
Okay, Mr. Scars?
Just wondering, Mr. Hicks, does this come with an extended warranty or any kind of maintenance plan? I'm just beginning to wonder how we're doing maintenance on these other trucks.
Now, we have the option to purchase an extended warranty up to a year after you purchase the truck. So we may look at adding an extended warranty on certain parts of the truck. And move forward. The truck we purchased, I think we were into $148,000, but I think at that time we spent another five, six thousand dollars on an extended warranty on that truck.
Yes, sir, Mr. Blackstock.
Mr. Hicks, in my dealings with you, since you arrived in Pennsylvania County, I've always found you to be an honest and straightforward individual. This is not a situation where we had some money left over with the original purchase of the pan, and we got a little extra cash, and we're going to run out and spend it. You truly need this truck to take care of the needs of the citizens of the county.
Yes, sir. Those six trucks, two of those trucks in excess of $500,000, our other four trucks are in fairly good condition. I've got six drivers on a daily basis, and I'll get them off later, and I'm having a difficult time having six trucks.
You need this truck.
And it takes every truck running on a daily basis to make it to all of the places. Especially on Monday, looking for drivers in America, trying to recover from the weekend and trying to get everything ready before the weekend.
That's all I need to hear.
Yes, sir, Mr. Warren.
Mr. Hicks, does this truck require CDL to drive?
All our trucks will. You also approved the purchase of a new boom truck this year, which is supposed to come sometime in April, and the size of that truck has increased, and will also require a CDL license.
I'd also point out, somebody in the audience just texted me that granite is not the color, it's the model, so it's a Mack granite truck, and so it's not going to be that gray color. That's just what somebody in the audience knows about Mack trucks. She just texted me that.
And the picture's granite.
Yeah, it is. Granite is like a Chevy Tahoe or Chevy Subaru. It's white, yeah.
I'm going to take for granite it's white.
I hope so.
Well, in my opinion, I thought granite was for durability.
Yeah, I think so.
Anyway, okay, any more discussion?
Granite says gray, you miss.
Any more discussion? Okay, what's the ballot of the Board? Cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, I will close the vote.
It passes unanimously, Mr. Hicks. Hope you can use that truck. Item B, community foundation grants appropriation. Ms. Vanderheide.
We received three letters from the Community Foundation regarding three grants that were applied for by the county. They are, well, actually, one is for the Pennsylvania Pet Center Spay and Neuter Program, and that's a fund where they collect donations for that purpose. So that wasn't really an application for that, but we did request those funds to be used for the pet center for Spay and Neuter Program in the amount of $2,000, more... Mark Moore applied for a grant for the Ringo Rail Trail Surface Project in the amount of $25,000. And then, the Fire Rescue Group applied for a grant in the amount of $9100 for a Quantifit respirator fit tester system. So, all of those were approved, totaling $36,100. And there is no local match for these grants, but they do need to be appropriated to the 2019 budget so that they can be spent for these purposes.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the Community Foundation grants in the amount of $2,000 for the Pennsylvania Pet Center Spay and Neuter Program, $25,000 for the Ringo Rail and Trail Surface Project, and $9100 for the purchase of OHD Quantifit respirator fit tester system for fire and rescue.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Blackstock, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Warren. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
The vote carries unanimously. Item C, Animal Shelter Budget Appropriation. Ms. Kimberly G. Vanderheide.
Yes, this afternoon during the Finance Committee meeting, you all presented with an animal shelter budget for the next six months on January 1st through June 30, 2019. These figures were put together by our new Pet Center Manager and James McLaughlin. And he did these figures together, and these are to take place since lunch, work, and life society is no longer running our shelter. So, the amount that he came up with for the next six months totaled $492,529. Some of those funds already exist in the Animal Services Budget for such items as electricity, water, and sewer, pest control, and also for the insurance. We had already budgeted for those items. So, I'll be able to transfer a total of $74,300 from the Assisting Animal Services Budget. The remaining $418,229 will come from funds that are remaining in the Community Policy and Management Board Budget and the CSA School Program Fund. So, we would like as staff to recommend that those items are transferred. In the meanwhile, monies will be collected through donations, through animal adoptions, starting now. So, those monies will be coming in to help offset some of this cost. At this time, I don't have an estimation of what that'll be, since Mr. McLaughlin just started the job in January, well, back in December, but fully functioning after January 1st.
All right, thank you, Ms. Vanderheide. Do I have a motion from the board? Do I have a motion from the board? Counselor?
Well, if there's no motion, we need a motion in a second, and either vote this up or down. If nobody wants to motion, it's just going to fail.
Is it behind door number one, door number two, door number three? No one's selecting, so as far as I'm concerned, I don't know that I rule on this, but motion fails, Counselor. Moving on to number D.
The next item that I have for you are expenditure refunds. These are being brought to you tonight because at the beginning of the year during budget season, we actually do budget an amount for expenditure refunds. They are monies that are coming through the General Fund. If they're monies that come through any other fund, coin, expenditure refund, they have to be appropriated as such. Tonight's amount of expenditure refunds for the first half of the year, I kind of hold them and bring them only at one time mid-year and then end of the year, totals $195,809.72, most of which, $150,000, are state funds that came through for the Governor's Opportunity Fund. So, those monies have to be appropriated so that we can send them to the company when the time warrants that. So, tonight, we are requesting that these expenditure refunds be appropriated in the areas that are listed on the page that is attached to your summary. So, they're different forms.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderheide, do I have a motion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appropriate a total of $195,809.72 as outlined in the memorandum that's in our board packet.
Thank you, Mr. Bar... Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Warren. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
Passes unanimously. Now, down to item E. Ms. Vanderheide.
The last item I have for you tonight is the Budget Calendar Adoption. This too was explained in the Finance Committee meeting, and we went through dates. There was one suggestion that needs to be added, so this will be updated for you all, and that was to add a meeting on February the 22nd, starting at 2:00 p.m. And that would be a joint meeting between the Board of Supervisors and the School Board to discuss budgets. And also, at 3:30, a Finance Committee meeting to review the budget request and any additions or deletions that have been made for the upcoming 2020 budget. So, I want to add that to the item, but all the rest of the dates, to my knowledge, were okay.
Okay. Ms. Vanderheide, so moves. Dr. Miller makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Scars. Any further discussion?
I have one thing, Mr. Chairman, is that this would not prohibit the Finance Committee from calling additional meetings should the need arise, just for public information.
All right, thank you, Mr. Warren, anyone else? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
Carries unanimously. Now, moving to item F, Economic Development. I know not who's speaking on that one.
Mr. Barber has it printed out.
Okay.
This is a strategic plan on the first?
Well, the way the CED is...
That's okay, we're good.
Which one are we doing?
Economic Development.
Mr. Chairman, I want to read a motion. I make a motion that we direct staff to draft a resolution that states Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors shall unanimously approve relocation and or abandonment of the southern port of Oak Hill Road that traverses through the southern Virginia mega site at Berry Hill should such action be needed to accommodate the location of a large Tier One manufacturer. Such resolution shall be presented at the next Board Supervisor meeting for consideration of approval.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Barber, seconded by Mr. Warren. Do we have any further discussion? I do apologize, I said E, and it was supposed to have been F. Yeah, can't even read my one.
That'd make me confused, man.
Yeah, well, I had to repeat. The thing is, is we have any more discussion on this particular proposal? Hearing none?
And go ahead and second it.
Oh, okay.
If there is no discussion, go ahead and please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
Seven carries unanimously. Now, we go to item G, Strategic Planning.
Mr. Chairman, I asked if this be voted on separate from consent, I'd like to make a substitute motion that we table this till after the budget is approved and then bring it back up.
Okay. Second.
29th in the budget.
Motion, okay. Motion made by Mr. Barber on item G, seconded by Mr. Scars. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Warren.
I will only make one comment about it. I'm fine with the table, it's not something that has to be done immediately. But, I would remind everyone that it is just a document, it doesn't bind us to any expenditures or anything. It's just a... It's a template of how we want to do in the future. There will be no binding clause to any of the expenditures or anything else that's suggested in the template. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren, anyone else?
Just wanted to have a little more time to review the document. We got it late and didn't have an opportunity to really dig into it, so I want to take a little time just to review it before we approve it.
Yes, sir, Mr. Scars. Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. No further discussion?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
It passes unanimously. Item number 13, Appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I want to point out one thing. I've looked further in specs at the white gloss, high gloss, matte white.
We found it, my bad. I was looking at the picture, granite. Just want to make sure we didn't get surprised and have to pay to paint a truck.
So, it's totally white, no stripes, okay? I like stripes on them. Number 13, Appointments. Number A, Appointment CPMT. Is staff contact?
Good afternoon, or night, I guess. I'm just here to have staff appointed, well, not staff, but representatives appointed to the community housing management team every year per the total of Virginia. They just have to be reappointed, no one is changing at this point. It's the same representative that we had last year, which is Monica Caravanic, which is from Arkansas Southside. She's our private provider for the community housing management team. And Amy Edwards is our representative. So, they have agreed to stay on this for another year, so I'm asking for approval of those appointments for them to stay on the board.
Thank you, Ms. Barwell.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, and we approve the appointment of Amy Edwards as brand representative and Monica Carboni.
Caravanic.
Carboni.
Took you a while, I get it.
Yeah, as private provider to CPMT for the term of January 15, 2019 through January 15, 2020.
All right, we have a motion, Ms. Warren. Seconded by Mr. Barber. Do we have any further discussion from any board member? Hearing none? Okay. Pardon me?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
Ms. Barwell, your appointees carry unanimously. Thank you, ma'am. Item B on Appointments, Metropolitan Planning Organization. Mr. Sides.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, at your reorganizational meeting, Mr. Supervisor Scars, Farmer, and Miller were appointed to the Danville, Pennsylvania Metropolitan Planning Organization. And in a technical matter, the appointee needs to reside within a representing area within the NPO boundary area. So, therefore, Mr. Farmer unfortunately would not be eligible. So, we need a new member to be appointed that would be from either the Tunstall District, the Chatham Blairs District, or the Dan River District.
Thank you, Mr. Sides. As the chairman, I don't know whether I should do this, but I am appointing myself as the alternate for the NPO. Do I have a motion?
This would...
Do I do that, or can I do that?
This would be, I point out, it would be a full voting member. Technically, I'm the alternate if Supervisor's not there. So, this would be a regular member as opposed to an alternate member.
We got a problem here, staff. Counselor? I don't know who's been appointed. I thought I would be appointed, or appoint myself to go as the alternate.
He would be a full member, just not an alternate member.
He would be a full member. If you don't want to be a full member, you appoint another victim from the Tunstall, Chatham, Blairs, or Dan River. Bob Warren. Come on, Bobby.
You can point yourself, Mr. Davis, that's fine.
Yeah, but then I've got a...
I ain't got enough to do, really.
I appoint myself as a full member with voting rights, okay? Do I have a motion?
You don't have to.
You don't have to.
I don't have to, okay. All right. Unusual night. B is done. Number C, Appointment SR RIFA Appointments.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that Mr. Blackstock and Mr. Farmer be appointed as our voting members to the Stanton River RIFA and that Dr. Miller be appointed as the alternate to the new Stanton River RIFA.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Warren and a second by Mr. Barber. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
The vote carries unanimously. The Planning Commission Appointments. Dr. Charles Miller, Jr.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, do I have a written motion or just...
If you just read the motion by the page 136.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, that's not... Planning Commission. No, that's Social Services. Planning Commission.
Here it is. Ms. Henderson? Right here.
Okay. All right, I make a motion to appoint Mrs. Colette Henderson as the Banister District Representative on the Planning Commission to fulfill Supervisor Miller's unexpired term, which expires on November 30, 2019.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Dr. Miller.
Second.
Do I have a second by Mr. Warren? Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the Planning Commission appointee? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Item E, Under Appointments.
All right, that would be me again. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Ronnie Clark to the Pennsylvania County Department of Social Services Board to fill an unexpired term that is set to expire January of 2021.
Motion made by Dr. Miller, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Warren. Any discussion?
I think we need to say July instead of January, just so we don't get divided.
July?
What did I say, I'm sorry, July of 2021. Should I read it all again? Okay, thank you.
All right, we have no more discussion?
I have a quick question. Do they normally just fill a term out, or would they start a new four-year term at this point? I don't know, per the bylaws, I thought they would just start a new four-year term. Is that not the case?
No, when someone resigns, you fill in their current term and check as far as... And then, everybody on the reappointment side.
Okay, just want to make sure about that.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second, no more discussion?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, I will now close the vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Item F, Appointment Reaffirmation. Danville, Pennsylvania County Community Services Board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reappoint Ms. Satafield to the... Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reappoint Ms. Satafield to the Danville, Pennsylvania County Community Services Board for a second term expired in June of 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Barber. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 14, Matters from the Work Session. We added one more.
We have, we added, um-
Oh, pardon me, that's right. Excuse me. Item G, excuse me. Appointment to TLAC, Mr. Farmer. Sorry about that, Mr. Farmer.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to add Dennis Benhoff as the citizen representative with his term taking effect February 1 of 2019 and ending on January 31 of 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. He made the motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Warren. Have any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Any items, matters from the work session? No, sir. Board Member Reports. Mr. Barber, do you have anything, sir?
Oh, yeah, I was gonna, one thing, Mr. Fitzgerald, if you call VDOT or the State Police, they'll fix your problem real quick. I know that when they log in, people call all the time, bust into me, and they call VDOT State Police, they'll come make them clean the road up. Anytime you sit out there, call one of them, too, and that's how you need to go.
Write this number down, Mr. Fitzgerald, 1-800-
911?
Four-Road, F-O-R-R-O-A-D. Not Roll-Aids, but Four-Road. 1-800-FORERoad.
F-O-R?
R-O-A-D, yes, sir.
The reason I said VDOT, let them come out and see the damage. When they get through, they'll make them fix the road, too. That, I don't know, but might be a civil action, I don't know.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify-
So we'll contact the Virginia DQ and get them out to assist.
Right, if this was a normal erosion problem, it's something the county could follow up on, but because this is a continuous project throughout the state of Virginia, it's regulated by the state of Virginia, not the county. But we'll pass those concerns along.
I think once they get the road, the mud in the road, it's a state issue, because like I say, every time they're done, pass, call State Police, they'll make them clean it up. You're supposed to pre, they build a gravel pit, they're supposed to clean trucks before they hit the road. I know that on any construction project.
D, yes, sir. DEQ's Department of Environmental Quality, I believe, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Blackstock, you have anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Farmer?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Miller?
Not really, other than I appreciate completely the local supervisors making the resolution for this return. I think that act of goodwill will go a long ways in terms of the public perception of local supervisors. And we're all ready to be set here on board and for coverage of serving, I don't mean the members of the Banister Division of the entire county, which is a testament to-
All right, thank you, Mr. Miller.
You did a good job.
Well, if I was to rate myself, I've been shooting about 86. I missed about nine questions. Mr. Scares?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to congratulate Christopher Spain. He's the new director of DSS. I think I'm hearing a lot of good things. He's only been on board since, I believe, the 2nd of January, but I've already getting good reports back, not only from the workers, but also foster parents and all across the board. I hope we take his opportunity. I hope everything, the issues that we've been dealing with for the last year are going to be a thing of the past, and I'm looking forward to working with the state in pursuing some of the other things that we still need to work on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scares. Mr. Warren?
I'd just like to thank all the citizens who've been here tonight, especially Scout Group here. I'm sure the chairman's gonna say something about that, but welcome. We appreciate you all being here, and appreciate you gentlemen, who give us the time to help our community grow. On a different note, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just ask our citizens to really continue to keep in their thoughts and prayers all the victims recently in some of the situations that our Sheriff's Department has had to deal with and handle, and really special prayers for our deputies. They see a lot of things, and a lot of horrible things, and have to deal with a lot of situations. It's tough to take those things home, I'm sure. I haven't experienced being a deputy myself, but I'm sure we've got two gentlemen in the back, and certainly Mr. Blackstock, who has his time as that. But my heart really goes out to them. We've read a lot about it, and I know everyone's concerned, and I just ask that you keep those in your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Warren, and I would reaffirm what he said, especially with our law enforcement personnel. I have a very soft spot in my heart, having studied computer forensics, as well as the legal system, as well as law enforcement, the suicide rate that you very rarely hear about among law enforcement, having to deal with the situations that they have to deal with. A lot of pressure, a lot of pressure to wear a pistol on your side, especially when you're in a combat situation, it's dictated by quite often legality, and a very, very fine line to walk, and I appreciate our law enforcement people. Secondly, I want to thank Mr. Chivvis, and I believe it's the Scout Troop of 372. Am I correct there? Imagine that. I hadn't slipped yet. I want to thank those gentlemen for attending tonight. I had the opportunity to speak to those Eagle Scouts over there, and we have a county administrator who attained that high degree of Eagle Scout right here with us, and I think it's an important privilege and a responsibility that's placed on our youth. And I'm thankful for our scout leaders, because I remember a lot of good times with a particular scout leader that I had that could send me on all of these crazy hunts at night, and these bird hunts. And this thing about that bird hunt, though, I forgot what the name of those things were called. What was it, Mr. Chivvis? Snipes, that's right. Snipe hunting? Yeah. But the funny thing about it is those snipes had the call of the crows, because I had Scout Mask could call in crows by his vocals, and I always wondered why in the world does a snipe sound like a crow? Anyway, all I did was hold the light behind the bag. We never saw one. So thank you for your time and your commitment to our society and our community. Thank you, all you young men for showing up. Maybe one day you'll want to consider this job. Stands for just over broke acronym, but thank you for your time. Lastly, I want to consider the staff. I appreciate Mr. Hunt, Mr. County Administrator, Mr. Hicks, Mr. Sides, Ms. Kalin, for sure, who held my hand right along with some others who patted it. Very nervous tonight, very nervous. So I appreciate them walking me through on a couple occasions. They are the worker bees. And one thing I will say and add in closing was that I never seen Ms. McCluster get in the zone. I would have thought she was playing the Super Bowl when she clicked today. I've never seen her go like that, but I do appreciate everyone that had an opportunity, and thank you, Mr. Louis White, for showing up, Mr. Fitzgerald, and all you, these other people that I do have the opportunity to meet each day. Mr. County Administrator, do you have anything, sir?
Yes, sir. Tonight, we officially, by your adoption of the Budget Calendar, have begun our more intense portion of the budget season. We went into last year, it was very, very hard. Everyone on this board and all of us on staff went through a very difficult process last year. The good news is that, as reported by Ms. Vanderheide this evening, things have stabilized, but unfortunately, the work's still going to be hard. I think going into this budget, we have a lot of unknowns. We briefly reviewed the pet center this evening, which is absolutely going to be a higher cost than previous years. We have EMS that is an ongoing unknown that really does unfortunately drive our budget from being in the black to potentially in the red on any given day. So we do need to continue to support our volunteer squads and our volunteer firemen, because they not only provide invaluable service that can't be quantified, they save our citizens a ton of money off our tax bills. So it's going to be a difficult year. We look forward to skinning it back with you and finding the best way to provide county government services as efficiently as possible. And in closing, I'll say it's been at least a decade since I've heard the word snipe, and I will remind the gentlemen in the room, they run downhill.
I was always on horizontal. Mr. Legal Counsel, Mr. Vaden Hunt, anything from you, sir? All right. Hearing none? As the chairman, I declare this meeting adjourned.